And if y'all feel free to sign up. If you would like to speak, I would appreciate if you would please sign in. This is everyone. At the end, I'll just get, if y'all want to make a public note whether you oppose or for the MSBU, and then I'll just get a count of that. The legislature, for time's sake, has implemented a three-minute speaking time for these public hearings. We'll try to adhere to that as close as possible. Depending on how many people speak, then we'll adjust accordingly, okay?
Mr. Chairman, can I, I want to say right now, can I just say, I would like to request that the questions from the audience be limited to just the property owners of Sunny Hills, the MSBU assessment.
Just the property owners?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I really don't think I can do that, and I don't have counsel here right this minute to give me an answer.
No, no, they're gonna, they're gonna, he's just gonna ask questions.
Well, basically, we're here to listen, and we're gonna give the three minutes, and we're gonna start with Jim and I, cannot pronounce your last name, Gessman?
My name is Jim Gessman, my wife Kathy. We live at 1983 Baldwin Street here in Sunny Hills. I want to thank the county commissioners for putting on this town hall meeting so the residents of Sunny Hills could speak about the MSBU ordinance. I think it's very important that commissioners hear from the people who live in on the property here. My wife and I moved to Sunny Hills two and a half years ago from Atlanta, Georgia. Moved here upon my retirement from the federal government. I spent 27 years of federal law enforcement, and during that time, we moved all over the country, lived in California, Texas, Louisiana, Florida, and Georgia. But always do when I'm retired, went back to the Panhandle, Florida. He said, "I'm from Jackson County, and I grew up in Grayskille, Florida." So I'm very familiar with Washington County in this area. In fact, I spent most of my childhood fishing and swimming in lakes, ponds, and creeks in this area around here. Moving here seemed like a really good fit, and that's a fit for me and my family. I often tell my wife that this area is the land that time forgot. It also looks like the county, land that county forgot. Before we moved here, my wife did some research on the internet about Sunny Hills, and was shocked at all the controversy between the county and Sunny Hills. I don't want to rehash what all took place before we got here, but it's clear that the relationship between the county and Sunny Hills was contentious at best. Hopefully, we move forward and put all that behind us for the betterment of Washington County and Sunny Hills. In researching the MSBU, I looked at the other counties in Florida that have MSBU ordinance. MSBU's are quite popular and used by many counties because they are win-win for the counties and the communities that they serve. Having the residents and unincorporated communities pay for their own services through an MSBU relieves the county from many of its financial responsibilities. Basically, we pay directly for services such as street lighting, driveway grass cutting, and beautification of our own community. If the MSBU were to be dissolved, you could bet these services would be reduced or not provided at all. Washington County is almost like almost every other rural county in the country. It has limited funds and must judicially watch every dollar it spends. I'm asking the county commissioners not only continue the MSBU ordinance, but also re-estate the advisory board made up of residents or owners from Sunny Hills. I know that there was an MSBU board before, but it appears their main recommendation was to dissolve the MSBU. To me, that was not helpful and did not appear to be in the best interest of Sunny Hills or Washington County. Once again, I respectfully ask that the county commissioners continue the MSBU ordinance and they devote the time and resources to ensure that Sunny Hills grows and prospers by sustaining or increasing value of our homes here, all of Washington County's benefits, from that growth and a increased tax base. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Mr. Bob Boer, Salem, Tom Shiplin?
I can't put my name on the list. I'm capable for any of you commissioners at the present time, so I'm not politicizing one way or another. I was off here in Sunny Hills about three years ago. I was well aware of the assessment, and there was quite a hassle going on at that time, and I stayed out of it. I've been involved in politics. I said, "It's my time not to get back in. Let me sit back and enjoy my life." This came up, and I thought, "If I don't show up and state my opinion, what I think's going on, whether it counts or not, I'd say I stated it." And what's been going on for 10 cents today, I can't see any money been better spent than this assessment. It's true, in the last couple of years, there's been a change. One old neighbor said that county used to have the county prisoners come out and cut the grass and go around the mailboxes. A lot of things have changed, but what hasn't overlied? And so, as far as me objecting to paying the fees or anything, I think it's money well worth spent, in my case. Everyone has their opinion of what they think, how they want to spend their money, and I just know how I like to spend mine, and I'm not here to dictate to anyone, "Well, you should spend it." But I will say, for the money that you are spending for this assessment, I think it's doing a world of good.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Warren and Judy from Concord Boulevard?
I'd just like to say that I don't want to see the community getting the fix they ran before and get a big debt again. If you want, keep the lights on at Boulevard. If you want mowing, we'll do that, and only that. Don't start the darn MSBU back up. We don't need it.
I want to be clear on something. You know, the MSBU has not gone away at this point, and the funds that are being collected, there's more funds being collected than we're actually putting towards them to areas. But why we're here is to understand what the residents here want.
Fine, but let's not put it in a group or one person's hands to tell us how we're gonna spend our money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, Jim Towne?
I bought my first lots here in 1974, and built my first house in '85, and my second house in 2002. So I've been around here 43 years altogether, and I agree with this gentleman that the MSBU is money well spent. There are some additional services that we used to have that we don't have anymore, trash pickup along the road, the litter trimming. I'd like to see some of the main roads cut with mowers rather than bushhogs, but I very definitely favor the MSBU continuing at its current assessment or allowance, for as long as the residents here wish to have it. The community has gone steadily downhill in the last seven years, and I'd like to see the community back up to where it was in 2005.
Is this Perry or Derry? Perry?
Pretty much, Mr. Townsend and this one here pretty much said it all. I was assistant fire chief here for a few years and seen a lot of the garbage that went on in this community trying to riffraff back and forth, which doesn't need to go on. This is a united community of very different nationalities, and we should all come together, okay? The MSBU needs to stay here. We need to bring the advisory board back, and I think the advisory board leadership work underneath the people of Carolina Falls, okay? But we need our services back. We need our fire department back, because you have a lot of elderly people here who depend on their services for the fire department that was here. The Washington County Fire Department, there's a response time that's ridiculous, okay? When I ran, our response time was within five minutes. We can't even get services out here in less than 15 now, okay? Our grass cutting crews need to come back, our beautification crews need to come back, the lights need to stay on for the safety of the people that uses the Boulevard to walk around at nighttime, okay? Because during the day, you know, here in Florida, it's too damn hot to walk around. So people wait till nighttime and use the Boulevard as their exercise. So the lights need to stay on. As far as anything else, okay, we have over six police officers from different agencies in this community, so we could better get a patrol officer to stay in this community and slow down the traffic on these boulevards. I had to move off of the Sunny Hills Boulevard because they were using it for a drug strip, okay? So I moved over to Elkan where it's a heck of a lot safer. But what I'm saying is, the services that we're getting for this community for 32, 40 bucks, whatever it is now, we have the lowest-paid MSBU in the state of Florida, and we should have better services for the money that's coming in. Because I've seen, like over in Navarre, they pay $1,200 a year for MSBU services, and theirs is worse than this one. We should have better services.
Patricia Namler?
I'm like some people, we've been here for a while, in almost 17 years now altogether, from my first house, now to my third house in Sunny Hills. I try to leave, but something brings me back. That penny or it's like a mech. There's nothing wrong with having an MSBU, and I wholeheartedly endorse anything like that. The problem is, we don't know anything about it. We don't know what we are supposed to be getting for it. We don't know, we don't feel like we have a say-so in anything that we do get or don't get. We have this community center right here, which houses a library, and there are a lot of community groups that would love to be able to use the building, but we're told we can't. Okay? We could hold meetings here and other events, but we don't, and it just sits here except for when the library's open, and when people come and play dingo and say, "They're gonna close the library," and that's it. We're paying this assessment, whether it's the same amount, whether it's less or more, we should be getting, first of all, the taxpayers. We pay our property taxes, and that should go the distance to allow us to get the same amenities and the same services that other people in this county get. We pay property taxes just like they do, and we're entitled to have our lights on on the streets to keep us safe. We're entitled to have the potholes built to keep us safe, just as much as Wausau, Chipley, Vernon, where you have anywhere else. The fact that we pay extra, and occasionally we get what we pay for, and most of the time we don't. We need representation. If we can't have some sort of a council where we get a say-so on a regular basis, and an accounting for the services, and accounting for the money that's being spent, how much is being taken in, and exactly how much is being spent, and who owns what out here in Sunny Hills, you know, like the lakes, do people really own the lakes? Do we have to pay, do we have to pay to use our own lakes? I mean, I thought this was all part of the county, especially since Deltona ran off, and so that it's part of the county. So everyone in the county should be able to use everything here in Sunny Hills without having to pay for it. We're paying taxes. Parks and Recreation should be taking care of the parks, just like they do at Shivers Park in Chipley. We should be able to use the park and have services there. But we don't know what we're getting for our money and what we're not. Maybe the answer is to incorporate. Maybe we should try to incorporate into, or be annexed by Wausau or Chipley. We have a Chipley zip code, so that maybe we feel more like a whole community instead of a bunch of redheaded stetsons. And that's exactly where we need to go. So as soon as we do something as far as getting accountability and some sort of a council together or representation, so that everybody knows what's going on all the time, not just a few select people who think they own the place, then maybe we can get something done, and we'll feel like we are a community, or part of Washington County.
Mr. Brian Godden?
Yes, sir. I'm trying not to rehash some of the things that have been said, but thank you all for holding this meeting here today. My name is Brian Godden. I live at 1981 Ambassador Court, just about a half mile from here. My wife and son and I have lived here for 10 years next month, and we love Sunny Hills. I'm a native of the Florida Panhandle, but, and I've been talking with some of the folks out there about these meetings and how important it is for 10 years now to have been coming to these meetings and letting our voice be heard as residents here in Sunny Hills. But this one particularly, I said, "You know, it's time. It's time that we speak out for our community and let our leaders know what it is that we need and what we would like." And someone made a comment that, you know, "It would be nice if Washington County was a rich county and had 100 miles of Gulf Coast shoreline and tourism and had money to provide services," but unfortunately, we don't, but we still love it. But with this community and this MSBU that's collected, one gentleman said, "Is it 10 cents a day? Is that all it is per property?" And it's not much. I mean, it's not much for what we should be getting, and then we use the lights on the Boulevard as one of the main reasons, main security thing. So certainly, my opinion, again, as I said, my opinion is that it's important that we move and pay that, and this may not only be an opportunity for us to speak out and say that we maintain what we need and deserve as a community that we're collecting, but it also may be a turning point tonight, that we begin to rally together and speak out on behalf of where our money goes, and that it does better serve our community, so that our property values maintain and even go up, and it's just a safe and a great place for us to live and raise families, and our grandkids and those come after us. So my opinion again is, you know, Sunny Hills is a great community. We've been here for 10 years. We love it. Don't plan to go anywhere else, and let's keep it great.
Mr. Jason Paradon?
I'm hearing what I gotta say. I've been here since 1982. MSBU, why haven't we had it as long as everything's been put over to what we need in here? Just recently bought in here, brought my family here because this is where I grew up at. Do I care what I have to pay for here? No, I don't, because I love it in here. Always have. 37.50 a year, that's fine, but give us what we deserve, give us what is needed in here, take care of what we have to have to take care of in here. Don't just rely on when it falls apart. That's what's gonna happen. People stuff just nonstop. The road's a hole in here. The money should be going to take care of that. When you break it down, and you want to get rid of MSBU, you've already turned us into Chipley address, are you gonna treat us as good as Chipley? I mean, that's my question. Chipley is what they get. They get treated with everything. I want to get treated like it's shitty, all the same, all the same. We spend our money, we pay our money. Out of my, my money, you know who doesn't have money? The people. I spend it for you, for being here. I love that my family's here, back with my family. So keep it, gotta have it.
Okay, next up, Alex and Beau Diaz?
Hello, my name is Alex Diaz, and my wife and I, children, and family have been living here for a little over four years, and we find this community to be a great community, a lot of nice people, a great environment. I'm for the MSBU. I think that they're the only ones that we've really heard and are concerned about our community. And speaking of the lights being one of the things that may be taken away from us, we need lighting, not just on the Boulevard, but as many places as possible to help deter crime. We rarely see law enforcement around. I have a law enforcement background, and I know what it takes to patrol and how to patrol your communities and have programs for the community, and we rarely hear of anyone else from Chipley or any other source coming to us or letting us know what we can do to improve our community, except from the MSBU. They've been very helpful, I've noticed that, since we first set foot here, and we need to be concerned with the safety of everyone here and, you know, regardless of where we all live. We need better law enforcement patrolling. We rarely see them. We need a fire department. You know, if one of the houses was to catch on fire, by the time anyone gets out here, you know, it's gonna be gone, people's lives can be lost. I just want to express my concern for the safety of the people, not just here, but regardless of where we're at, we need to focus on the essentials that we need. You know, we want to be able to be heard, because sometimes, as I understand, you know, this is communicated, and it's been communicated before, but nobody's doing anything about it, nobody takes it serious enough, perhaps because they don't live here and they live somewhere else, but we have to protect each other and work together at accomplishing all of these goals that we need to take care of.
Next, we have Mr. Sam?
I've been here 43, over 43 years. I've been dealing with the MSBU for over 11 years. Yes, MSBU's good if it's worked right. There's a lot of things the people in here don't understand though. One, they gotta get out there and help. Two, you just can't leave it up to certain people to do what they want. As far as fire department, you have a paid fire department here. Whether it takes you five minutes to get to a fire or 15, that's the best response time you're ever gonna get. I don't care where you're at. I came from a big city. They made it in 20, and you were lucky. So, but the county's gotta do something too. Yes, we don't have a very good police protection in here. We had a crime watch that was taken away from us because the county could make more money with people going to school for that, which, fine, but we still don't have the protection here. What is the county gonna do for us? That's the one question. What are you gonna give back to us? We keep the MSBU, fine, but what is the county gonna do? You spend a person out mowing the grass once a year over six weeks. What did that cost the county? We have MS, we have a mowing crew, all right? They weren't the best this last year. It kept missing, doing half the job, and we're paying almost $9,000 a mower. That's a lot of money.
Wasted money.
Wasted. They didn't mow right. And I complain and complain. We have too much dumping in here, in this area. All right, we call it in, it's picked up, which is very good. It keeps our area a little decent. That's number one. But the county's gotta help too. We collected this so far this year, 200. Hang on. You'll get that figure in a minute. Take the last bit here. So far to date, we collected $224,000 worth of the money. It hasn't been spent yet. That's one thing. It's being spent on lights right now, and that's 21, $2,000 to $2,100 a month. But like I said, the people have to get out too to help. They see litter on the Boulevard, stop, bend over, and pick it up. It don't hurt. If I could do it, anybody can do it. I'm 76 years old, and I'm out there cleaning up these. By the time they start doing the work too, I'd go out and mow extra. I'd mow the Boulevard, I'd mow our county easements. Now, the county has an agreement with Deltona. They're supposed to maintain the lightaways, the drainage, and water, or waterways. These haven't done really. As far as the roads, I know yous don't have the funds to repair roads, but they are in terrible, terrible shape. Right? I know a lot of people live on dirt roads, yes, they're worse. Matter of fact, Tom went and did me a favor, because a person's husband passed away, she's having family coming in, and the road is sandy. He's gonna put a couple loads of clay in it, but the county's gotta help too.
If we've got that much money, why hasn't the entrance been fixed?
The entrance?
If we have that much money?
That mean Sunny Hills, the entrance?
Yes.
You're gonna lose it. The state is coming through, take it away.
So what are you gonna do?
Well, what you can do, the state is gonna wipe the road.
Are you gonna make a new entrance when that?
That's up to Deltona. That ain't up to us. That is not our property.
Thank you, Mr. Sam. Thank you. We're at the point, if I can have everyone's attention, please. Quiet, please. There's no one else signed off. We've got a few more minutes. If there's anyone that has something to say outside of what already has been said?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm wondering if he's saying that there is $200,000?
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
No, I'm sorry. My name is Kristi Kriest, K-R-I-S-T-I, and the last name is S-U-T-C-H. I just heard this gentleman say that there's $200,000 in the fund, and the lights are $2,100 a month, that's 110. So where's the rest of the money going, and who is the one responsible? Are these, are these people responsible, or is the people, are there people that are in charge of the MSBU?
Can I answer that?
No, no, no.
It sounds to me like there's money that's being, there's youth just already, the money that's there.
Ma'am, what that amounts to is, right now, that is the money left after the debt was paid off and what was collected.
Okay.
The reason we are here, and up to this point, has been a very wonderful meeting, and I'm very impressed with everyone in the way they've handled themselves, and let's please continue to do that. That's why we're here, to try to work with you guys, whether it be a board come forward, whether it be some added money you want for your dollar, that's why we're here.
And I didn't mean to sound like I was trying to get out of line, because I'm really confused. I've lived here for about five years, and I've heard different people talk. I've not, I mean, I'm busy, and I don't get a lot of, you know, I don't know, I haven't been here for that long, but I've heard, in the time that I've been here, I've heard, I've had several conversations with other people in the community, and I hear one side of it, that there are several in this community that try to take over, and they misuse the money, and they had created this, they had this fire department that is in really disrepair, and they weren't doing it right, and that was why the county took over and made it something. And I'm just saying, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, that's not working, but then I heard on the other hand, that it was the county commissioners that were not, I'm confused, that's why I think you're not trying to figure out what the world is.
And thank you, ma'am, and I appreciate your input, but we're really not gonna get into that, because there's so many things that have gone on prior to us. There's two new members that have never even voted on anything. I voted on extending the mowing contract just so we could finish the year out. So we're a new board. We're here to listen to the people, and that's what we're here for, and not to dredge up old, you know, let's, I mean, let's.
I'm just wondering, so if there's all this money, who's the person that should talk?
This, this board at this time?
Okay, okay, now, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
We need your address.
We need your address. If you could step up and please give it to her, to the lady who's got it.
Okay, you want me to come up?
Please. Okay. The next gentleman recognized.
Lee Edwards?
Yep.
I've been here 10 years, I'm on the 2008 Shenanigans Boulevard. Just a curiosity question. The previous debt is all paid off now?
Yes.
Just for, in rough amounts, for the people that don't know what they pay for and what they're getting here, the few of us that are here pay 35, is it, 38, whatever it is?
I think it's 31.9.
31.98 years. And where's it collected, almost $450,000 a year?
We don't collect a dollar.
Well, that's what's assessed. There's $450,000. Why would you want to give up whatever can be collected, at least it's placed against the property as lean then, okay? Why would you want to give up that much money for the betterment of this place, as long as we know where it's going? I don't think anybody's gonna have a problem with 35 bucks a year.
Absolutely, and that's why we're here. Okay? Can we please, please? Please, ma'am?
My name is Lee Lucker, L-U-C-K-R. I am a resident of Sunny Hills for 32 years, and I have loved every second of it. I have one question.
Okay, you want me to come up with it?
Please. Okay.
The next gentleman recognized.
I'm Lee Edwards. I've been here ten years, almost two thousand and eight, Shannonville Boulevard. Just a curiosity question. The previous debt is all paid off now?
Yes.
Just for, in rough amounts, for the people that don't know what they pay for or what they're getting here, the few of us that are here pay thirty-five, is it, thirty-eight, whatever it is?
It's thirty-one ninety.
Thirty-one ninety-eight years. And where's the money collected of almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year?
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, that's what's assessed.
Right, they don't pay.
They're, it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Why would you wanna give up, whatever can be collected, at least it's placed against the, the property as lean then, okay? Why would you wanna give up that much money for the betterment of this place as long as we're gonna work going? I don't think anybody can have a problem with thirty-five bucks a year.
Absolutely, and that probably, that's why we're here.
You've already had it. Can we please, please? Ma'am?
My name is Lee Lucker, L-U-C-H-R. I am a resident of Sunny Hills for thirty-two years and I have loved every second of it. I have one question. During those thirty-two years, I have heard on and off that Sunny Hills pays for the MSBU, yet some of the funds are being used by Chipley.
No, ma'am. We've, we've got the number, that's not so, and we're honored. The city of Chipley has their own tax base, they pay like an additional six mil beyond or whatever.
Okay, alright. I think we're to a point where we're kinda repeating ourselves. Can I have everyone's attention? Is there anyone that has anything new to add? Okay. I'll start with you, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Dorota Ropas and we're at four one one seven Lingwood Drive. And been here five months. What exactly are you? What is the MSBU? What are you supposed to do? I'm not even middle of all this figuring. What am I paying for? Easy question.
Get, get with, no, it's not that. You get with me after the meeting and I will get with you.
Sir, you've already had the four, I've got two more of you guys. The gentleman in the green and ma'am, your name. We got one of those.
Seventeen twenty-eight St. Louis Drive. I've been here for a year. And I've known a lot of you who have lived here, love this place, and I have to tell you that I love it too, only I've been here, still to here. I have to tell you, I'm a rich landscape architect. I'm an artist and I have to tell you that this is one of the most beautiful places on earth. What you have here does not look like anywhere else. It's a sand hill, but you have here, have endemic plants. It has a part of nature that can't be repeated anywhere else. One of the things that I would like to see any extra funds go to would be to preserve and to improve the natural area. Deltona, South Side, conservation areas. And I enjoy hiking and there are a lot of trails in and around the area and I walk the trails. I'm upset by what I see happening to the natural environment here. The eastern shore of Watering Lake is being torn up by someone who thinks it's their own private property. There are endemic plants and endemic bees. There are plants that occur in Watering Lake that occur nowhere else in the world. And they're being torn up. And I think that any discussion of law enforcement should also include protecting the fragile, the natural environment that you have here. There's beautiful areas of...
Mr. Porter, you get the time, you're closing in more. Thank you, sir. In the back.
Hello, good evening. My name is Andrea Smith-Mathwood and I've been living in Sunny Hills for approximately four years. And my mom also has relocated, but we invested in this community many years ago prior to moving here. Now, the problem that I have is I'd like to know how to go about having our road fixed. We take care of the sidewalks, we redid the cul-de-sac, built the bricks, did everything beautiful for it, but we can't fix the street. And the thing about it is that we can't really walk much on the side because you have these handills. So, walk on the street and I fell in a hole. There's not enough paved area properly. I fell in a hole and had to go for physical therapy in Chipley. So, I need to know how to get, we did everything. We made, we add value to Sunny Hills, so we need to know how to get that road.
Yes, ma'am. And what I'll do, Mr. Carroll, you'll give her your card and you call Mr. Carroll and...
See the road? See the road?
I need to talk to him. We need to talk to him.
The last gentleman?
My name's Charles Sons. I live at forty-one twelve Fairbanks Drive in Thoreau from here in here. I've lived here twenty-one years. Me and my wife walk on these streets every day. I've seen probably everybody in here walk. This is a great community, but thirty-eight dollars a month is not gonna make it much greater than it is. But what I'm trying to say is, the people has got to step forward to help this community. You have, you have houses right now that nobody's been in the house in ten years and the next door neighbors have to put up with it. You can call the county and the county says they can't do anything about it. My next door neighbor, just like that. My house, probably twenty thousand dollars in landscape. Next door neighbor, if my washing machine tears up, I just throw it on the front yard. But it's a legitimate complaint. I mean, that drives my property value down. These houses in Sunny Hills that nobody's lived in, that when a car quits running, it just leaves it wherever it stopped. I pick up trash every time we walk. I work for Bay County Sheriff's Department. Last week I was late for work because I stopped and moved palm tree limbs out of the road where somebody's dumping them. Well, if I didn't move them, then, or somebody else in this community didn't move them, they wouldn't get moved. So what I'm trying to say is, have somebody lives in this community, either, I'm not saying that we got to save where this money goes, but let us know where this money goes. Let some of us even, but sit there. I'll come to every meeting if you showing me where the money's going. But I, I can tell these people where it's going if I go to a meeting, but these people just like me, they don't know where it's going. And, but they, they know that they don't, none of these people mind paying thirty-eight dollars a month for whatever it is. You want me to pay a hundred, I'll pay a hundred. But, a hundred a year. But what I'm trying, or thirty-one a year, but what I'm saying, I'd pay a hundred a year if it, if it keep these streets up. And I think everybody in here feels that way.
Alright, y'all bear with us just a second. At this time, I'm gonna let the commissioners speak if they wish and I'm gonna start with the commissioner of this district and ask him if he has anything to add. Thank you.
I'm Steve Jones, District Five Commissioner of this area and this district. Like Mr. Perry and I are here, I was raised in this area and stomping the woods and everything else we hear. I'm like the gentleman back here, it's about a while ago, it's one of the most beautiful places in the world. One of the most beautiful counties in the world. I've worked all over the world. And some of the finest people live here in this community and other communities in this county. We wanna see the whole county flourish and do better. And, you know, you people don't understand, understand MSBU. It was set in place to enhance your community. The money is spent here only, it's not spent Chipley, it's not spent outside of your area. And our clerk, she has a record of that. You can get you a budget at any time from her if I run the bill. So, you know, the money is for a county to call. We have an audit done every year and, you know, we, we want to spend the money here and it needs to be spent here, that's what it's for. It's your money and it's gonna be spent in this community. And the roads are a big issue. You know, I live out in rural area like most of the population of this county does. The county doesn't mow my grass, it don't burn my lights, it don't pick up my garbage. And I pay taxes just like everybody else does, but I don't believe in MSBU. That's gonna fit the job, ma'am, and it's a great thing and needs to be used that way. And I'm gonna try to help and this board is, is going to do the same. They're gonna try to help you people get this MSBU up and done like you want it to and see that it's handled like y'all want it to. And that's what we're here for. We wanna listen, we want to do the right thing for y'all. And if I can be of any assistance, anybody's let me know, but like I say, I, I, you know, lived here all my life, I understand Sunny Hills, I can only live in nothing here, but San, uh, San Francisco, you know. We run in these woods and we fish down them and, you know, a lot of people lives here now and it's a big impact on this county and it's getting bigger and more and more to go. We gotta take care of it, we need to work it out and take care of it. So, you know, I'm glad all of you come out, I'm glad the city's gonna turn out. I wanna see more meetings and more input. You know, that's what we need to make decisions, you know, to help here, y'all, you know. And if we can be of any assistance, every one of us be here, you know, around to be, to speak to us and let us know what you'd like. I appreciate everybody coming.
My name's Alan Bush and I'm actually the, my commissioner district is from the west side of Wausau to Caryville. It's a real big area, but, but I, I'm in favor of the MSBU and I don't know, some of the other board members may as well, but I've, I've got lots down here. So, I paid that thirty-one ninety, I don't know, six or seven times over for whatever lots I've got. But to me, if we didn't have that at all, this would grow up into, if, if you had the same law cycle like Steve said that you have on my road, there's never been a mower down my road. And in forty years, the tree trimmers have been down there twice. So, now you can imagine that in a residential area like this, how awful that would be. So, we're in a great spot now, in my mind, in the, in the, what time I've dealt with this. We have cleared up a lot of the issues and problems that the MSBU had as far as debt. And this is a good point we've got. I've had a hundred and ninety-eight. But either one, a hundred and ninety-eight. So, two hundred thousand dollars right now that we can utilize for, for whatever we need. And then from that point forward, figure out, alright, that's what this meeting was about. What, what do you want? You know, to me, you have to have the mowing, you got to have the street light if you want, so let her pick up. What, what services do we need? Figure out what those costs are gonna be.
Sidewalks.
Fire. Figure out what they, what the costs are gonna be. Then, you can't just figure out your lot because a lot of lots gonna pay the taxes. So you don't always have that full income coming in. But then, what's reasonable? Can we go to fifty? You know, do we want to increase service? But I think we're at a great, a great point right now. I know like I say, it's, it's near and dear to me because I don't wanna see Sunny Hills fail. And I've got money invested here and I want it to be a great success, you know. So, it's just figuring out, we're a good, good starting point right now. And if we need an advisory board, I think that'll be a great thing. But you gotta get the right people on the advisory board. You know, you can't have people that are fighting all the time because then it just, I came to an MSBU meeting. And it was, it was, it was embarrassing. When you got somebody up there in the SOB and the GD and all that in the middle and they're representing the board? I mean, really? It was, that was awful. And I just, I think we're at a good point to start all over again and, but I'm in favor of keeping MSBU.
We're not gonna take any more questions at this time, but I promise you, I will stay around and will answer and I'm sure some of the rest of the board will be glad to talk with you one-on-one.
Again, I appreciate each and every one of y'all taking the time out of your busy schedules coming out tonight to speak with the board, uh, voice your concerns. We as a board, I know, speaking to the entire board, but I'll tell you this, we're all very concerned and we, and the success of Washington County, coming from Sunny Hills, making Sunny Hills successful for Stripes County as well. But tonight, tonight in our meeting, what I, what I gather, I took notes throughout the meeting and, and one of the biggest things y'all discussed tonight was roads, mowing, trimming, parks, lighting, putting the fire department, bulk trash pickup. I've heard them mention it up tonight. And that's exactly what this meeting was for tonight, for us to be able to gather the information that you, the constituents of Sunny Hills wanted and us to take it back to the board, discuss it in a workshop. And another thing I've heard enough, Commissioner Bush said that he needed to buy it. And again, we voice the same concerns he does. We wanna, we want a board that works together and works for the better of Sunny Hills. But again, we're here to help. Each and every one of us, I can call the county office, get our phone numbers, we'll be more happy to speak with you. You got a great chair, you got a great commissioner working in this area here, he'll do a great job for each and every one of you. But again, if for some reasons you need to reach out to one of his fellow commissioners, please do not hesitate to call. We're here to make Sunny Hills the best place it can be and the word with each and every one of you. Thank you for tonight.
There's not much I can say on top of what these gentlemen just said. I'm Charles Kent, my district is the district of most of around Chipley because of how much is there. With, and it's a small district. But what I saw tonight and what they had me geared up to listen to, I wanted to meet each and every one of you for the hospitality that you've showed this board. And in return, I guarantee this board is gonna go with the information that you've given us. This is the beginning step of making this the best MSBU and the best Sunny Hills that it can possibly be. And I'm with the rest of them, I'd like to see possibly a board. I would like to see a lot of things. I love Sunny Hills, play a lot of golf here. I grew up around Gap Pond all around and, I mean, this is really a beautiful, beautiful area and I appreciate the gentleman talking about the wood, wood area, you just can't go anywhere and find that. So, at this time, we're gonna adjourn the meeting in just a second. And we will all stay around and we will be glad to answer any questions you might have one-on-one.